Meeting of December 4th of 2023. We're going to start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice President Toy. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Toy. Tonight's meeting will set the agenda for the 1,983rd regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting and will take place on December 13th, where all of tonight's items will be officially voted on. We're going to start tonight's meeting noting that all seven members of the council are present, and we will go directly to audience communication for anybody wishing to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there any audience communication? I see none. That's closed. Is there any comment from the council or announcements from the council? I see none. We will start with the agenda. New business, item number one is a request for Fourth Amendment to consent judgment for property. Strange rate. Located on Seven Mile Road in Victor Parkway, coming to us from Tim Lawren, Director of Land Acquisition from Robertson Brothers Homes regarding a site plan approval to construct a multifamily residence proposal on the site. This site's council resolution 5203, 66397, 11106, and 41213. I'm going to go to Mr. Toramina real quick. Can you give us a very brief recitation of the facts that led us to this point in regards to the history of this site, and then give us a rundown of the current proposal, please?
Certainly. And I'll give you just a brief history on this, and then maybe let Mr. Lawren explain the project in more detail. So this is a request to amend the consent judgment involving the property at the northeast corner of Seven Mile and Victor Parkway. The original consent judgment was approved by council in 1997, and that involved settlement with Oakwood Health Systems, who sued the city following a denial of a 1996 petition involving the rezoning of the property from RUF to professional office. That original consent judgment granted Oakwood the right to construct a three-story, 50,000-square-foot ambulatory care and medical office building. That was on one of the three parcels that are the subject of the consent judgment. We're going to refer, you're going to hear the term parcel A. Parcel A is what we're looking at this evening. This is the largest of the three parcels on the property. It's about 6.4 acres in overall area. Parcels B and C were also included in that consent judgment. Parcel C has been developed primarily with the, or most of parcel C was developed with the Child Care Center, and then parcel B, which is north of the drain on this property. That is to be reserved mostly for open space for the property. So the consent judgment has been amended three different times. The first was involved a change from a medical office building to a general office building that was to be 100,000 square feet. That was approved by council, but that was never developed. The second time was for the Child Care Center that I mentioned. That was developed by Talent Development Company. And then the third was for a one-story, 54,000-square-foot office resource building on parcel A. That was to be done by Ekin. Now, you will recall a 2019 petition involving this parcel A as well as parcel B to the north, which would have eliminated a significant portion of the open space on that property, as well as a portion of parcel C. So that 2019 petition, which was denied by this body, involved 8.8 acres, and that would have approved two buildings, both four stories in height, or one was four stories and maybe the other was three stories in height, and 265 apartments. And that would have been a density of about 30 units per acre. What you're going to see this evening is a proposal, again, just involving parcel A, so a smaller land area than what you saw in 2019. And this would be for a townhouse apartment development. It would include 15 buildings, and the units would range, I think, anywhere from four to eight units per building, unit sizes ranging from 1300 to 1600 square feet, and an overall density of about 15.6 units per acre. So almost half the density that you saw in the 2019 petition. What the consent judgment would do if approved would authorize the use of the property consistent with the conceptual plan that you'll see this evening, and then it would be followed through a more detailed site plan review. So the site plan would come back to the council, first through the Planning Commission for its review and recommendation, and then final approval by a city council. So with that, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I can turn this over to Mr. Lawren, and he does have some slides he'd like to show you.
Please, thank you. Sir, tell us your name and title, please.
Sure. Good evening. Tim Lockren, Director of Land Acquisition with Robertson Brothers Homes, 6905 Telegraph Road in Bloomfield Hills. Tonight with me I have Jim Clark, our President of Robertson, and Josh Swardini from Ekin. So appreciate your time. If you wouldn't mind, I'll just go through a brief presentation. Thank you. So I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce you to Robertson. We've been around almost 80 years. So we've been here for a long time in southeast Michigan. We're a top-five home builder here in the market, but we do not build out in the cornfield. That's not what we do. We like infill, walkable type of communities. So really, you know, drove us to this site in conjunction with Ekin. We would be partnering on a joint venture with Ekin on the site. So be happy to go through it quickly and then answer any questions you have. So I think the first question is why residential? The consent judgment currently calls for office development, and obviously, you know, I think we all know kind of the challenges that the office market has, particularly because of the pandemic. And a lot of experts really believe that office space will be marginalized in the future, especially when you look at the I-275 corridor alone. You've got about 1.5 million square feet of vacant office space, and the region has almost 20 million. That's according to Signature. So now, this, it's a challenge with the site. It's a challenge everywhere for office development, and we believe residential is a much more logical land use for the property. And then when you talk about manufacturing as well, you know, this site really looks more as a transitional use, which I'm going to get into a little bit when I show you the context plan as well. And there's already some of that manufacturing industrial, obviously, in the vicinity. And we also think that future residents really will bring more rooftops to your mixed-use retail areas, which is growing, and I think there's a lot more to come in Livonia. So that's something that we think is a net positive to Livonia. So if we can go to the site plan, which is there. So the site plan in general, again, this was previously planned for an office development with a lot of parking. I'll show you that in a second. This would be four leased townhomes, essentially, with all attached one and two-car garages. They range anywhere from 1,300 square feet to about 1,600 square feet. Obviously, the smaller one would be the one-car units. Plenty of parking for guest spaces, lots of open space. You have a pond in the corner, in the southeast corner of the site, which is where it drains naturally. And we just think there's a lot of green space that you can get out of a development like this. A couple of different courtyards you can see. And one of the things I do want to note, along Seven Mile, which obviously is the face, the front of the development, that's where most of our, a lot of our homes will be fronting. That's really the nice elevation. That's what you're going to get when you come down the street. And I'll show you elevations. And again, when we talk about elevations, we know that that's, you know, a process that we'll go through together with you, with the Planning Commission, the council staff. Every community's different, and we're open to that. It's an iterative process as we go through that. So that's the site plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions when we get a bit further. But the main access would be off of Victor Parkway. The next slide, that is, that's what's approved today. So that's what they could go out and build today, which doesn't have the open space and certainly does not have, I think, the, there's just no market demand for that type of development. So it's going to sit there for a long time with the current land use. So moving on then, next slide just talks about site constraints. Nothing real important to talk about this, other than it is a difficult site. It's one of the reasons why it hasn't been sitting there for so long. We're used to building sites like this. In fact, that's what happens when you focus on infill development. So certainly a challenge that we know all too well. But that is one of the reasons why it has sat there, plus the water table's a little bit high. So these are just some of the site constraints we have on the site. I think this is important to show. This is the site context. And what this really shows is that, you know, we don't have immediate single-family neighbors to us, yet we do have some residential in the area. And what, I think this is a very good transitional piece. You've got, in fact, you've got a daycare behind us. You've got a commercial across the street on two sides. Certainly, you have a mixed-use and office to the northwest. So we really feel like this is a very good transitional use for the site. And you can just see, I think it blends in very well, and you can see all the green space that we'll be really retaining on the site, just to kind of blend in. So I do want to point out, we do meet with the neighbors. We haven't done that at this point. It's something that's very important to Robertson. We always meet with the neighbors. We'll meet with them. We'll meet with them again. It's important that, you know, we have an understanding of what's important to them and things that we can, you know, obviously, change on the site if necessary. Don't really have any that's adjacent to us, so things like buffers aren't exactly what we'd be discussing, but just want to, you know, alleviate that, that we go out of our way to meet with the neighbors. It's very, very important to us. So moving on. Well, you're fast, right? So the development area, it's just over six acres. As Mark mentioned, it's about 15 units per acre. Existing zoning is consent judgment. So the purpose of our discussion tonight is for Fourth Amendment, potential Fourth Amendment to the consent judgment, to allow for four leased townhomes on the property. We're proposing 100 total, and this gets thrown about a lot, this term "missing middle," but I think it is important, especially when you look at a site like this, where it is more of a transitional use. You know, affordability is a real issue, obviously, overall in the market, and missing middle is something a lot of cities have been striving to achieve. And again, all of them do have a one- and two-car attached garage, which I think is unique for four-leased living. As I mentioned before, generous size, 1,300 to 1,600 square feet. Each of them have what we call Zoom Room on the first floor, which I'll show you some floor plans, which has been very popular. It's something you don't typically get in a product like this. And then another thing that's really important, I mentioned already, but the open space is about half the site, which is important. That's all the green space on the site, and that's something you get with this type of product. So that's hopefully something that we can all appreciate. So moving on to the project highlights real quick. Again, we're teaming up with Ekin. You know, they're great at what they do. Obviously, they see value in what we can bring to the residential side as well. And there's just a need for housing in the area. That's clear all throughout the area, but especially, I think, along this corridor. So we've been looking at ways to find a sense of place, but also utilizing a vacant property that will just sit there, you know, if something doesn't happen. So again, high-quality residential townhomes, multiple open spaces for socializing and recreation. It's walkable. It's inviting community. And then again, I keep bringing this up, but I think it's really important to talk about the transition to surrounding land uses. I'm almost done, I swear. So the next couple of slides, these are all Robertson projects, either some that we've built or some that we are building currently. And I just, I put these two slides in here because I think it's really important to show that these are actually, by and large, the same home, the same townhomes. Some are one-car, some are two-car, but generally speaking, they're all kind of the same. And what you see is, they're all very different when you look at it. We can be modern. We can be traditional. Frankly, I don't want to say we don't care. I think we have some ideas of what could go on the site, but this is your community. And I think that kind of visual architectural eye is something that's important to the city. So that's something that we'd be working with staff and the Planning Commission yourselves to understand what's right for that location as far as architecture. But I just think it's important. These are all Robertson projects that we're building currently. So we can, I'm not saying pick one of these. I'm saying we can get creative and do different things. So the floor plans, again, I kind of talked about this, but what's interesting is you have a very nice, and you saw them on the elevations, but you have a very nice front entry. That's where your guests come in. You come through the back, the owners do, through the garage. So you can see the garage. If you're just looking at the Aspen, you come in through the back, and in the front there's that flex room. Again, we call it the Zoom Room. That's just something that's been very successful for us. And then that second level, and surely on both plans, you have this wide-open, open floor plan with kitchen, livable area, dining area with a half powder room. And then on the second floor, depending on if it's a one- or two-car, you get two or three bedrooms. So, you know, it fits the needs for young professionals, fits the needs for young families. A lot of, you know, sometimes we see in some communities, a lot of divorcees that want to, you know, stay in the school district. So I think there's a lot of different types of, you know, future people, future residents that we'll see here and would really be successful in that respect. So I just end on the site plan again. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Jim and Josh are available as well, but we'd love to build here in Livonia. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for presenting that to us. Very nice presentation. When you guys were here in 2019, I know there was a lot of opposition to that, but I actually really liked what you guys were proposing in 2019, and I ended up voting no because of a technicality with the zoning, as you might recall, and I was kind of disappointed I had to do that, because I liked the project. And I think you did a good job of stating the reasons why this could make sense, and I get it and concur. My one question is, so the part to the north, on the other side of the creek, the trees or whatever, that you're not developing, and you own that, right?
No.
Oh, you don't?
No. That's for, I know, I think that was for sale, probably still for sale, but no, that's not part of what Ekin owns.
And I guess maybe through the chair to Mark, and maybe I'll go back to the petitioner, but Mark, do you have any thoughts as to what the ultimate plans for that might be? Do you think, after what we went through four years ago, what they're proposing now, does that just stay as it is, or do you think that's still something that can be developable? And the reason I'm asking, sorry for the long question, but the reason I'm asking it now is just because if there's, I would just like to be eyes wide open if what we approve here limits our ability to do something there.
I don't think it does limit it. This is the plan that was one of the exhibits of the original consent judgment. And you'll notice that that area on the north side of the drain, the drain runs along this diagonal line here, that has, that is encumbered, really, with an open space easement. Now, what's unique here is this line that separates this parcel B from parcel C. That line, in terms of ownership, is now shifted a little bit further to the east. So the owner of this parcel C also, as I understand it, owns parcel B. There's a small portion reserved here that technically is within the buildable area of the property, but you'll see the original consent judgment, and the consent judgment that, as it would retain this open space easement. So nothing can be done on this property unless this body chooses to alter that open space easement.
So thank you for that. And I guess, just thinking out loud here, when you show that, I suppose there's possibility then that something could be built eventually on the opposite side of the parking lot from the learning tree, you know, based on what you're showing there. So anyway, I guess that answers my question. And I know some of my colleagues have questions, but I'll just say I, oh, I'm sorry, one more question. So what we'd be approving here is this amendment to the consent judgment. There'd still be all the site plan stuff and stuff that comes later for the final.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be in favor of this. I'd offer an approving.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you very much. If I may, to the petitioner, sir, you showed some pictures of some of what you've done. Are any of those in Shelby Township by any chance?
No, they're not.
No? Okay. It just reminds me of something friends of mine lived in where you have a first floor with a garage, and that's your entryway, and a long mountain step up to, you know, the living quarters with a half bath, and then the bedrooms, whether it be two to three and full bath upstairs with the laundry. And they just reminded me because of the balconies. Where are most of your facilities been built, then?
We build, I'd say probably half are in Oakland County. So, you know, Novi, Troy. We're building out in Milford, I'm sorry, in Brighton right now.
Sure.
We've built these in Northville, and there's obviously some we've been building in Detroit as well, which are kind of the more modern urban look.
Sure. And they're selling very well, I'm going to take it, right?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, obviously, interest rates have really kind of affected this type of buyer, but yes, you know, I'd say this, we probably build at least a third or more of our products, our townhomes, this style.
The green belt you have on your site plan is very attractive, too. I like how you pointed out, you know, that it's there and that you have some nice shrubbery planned if that be the case. But I would caution you to approach those neighbors there. I believe it's Martin's and a few other streets. They were very active about four years ago.
I'm understanding that, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sure you've probably read those minutes, et cetera. And I think the sooner you get to folks like that, the better you're going to have it, because there's some lovely homes back there that are real, you know, large, and they value their property and their homes. So just, if you could do that for us, that would be real helpful.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for being here tonight, Robertson and Ekin. Just to clarify, Robertson, you guys were not the petitioners in 2019, correct?
No.
No. And Ekin was the petitioner. You guys owned it. Just wanted to set that straight. Couple comments and questions as well. The green belt that my colleague, Vice President Toy, mentioned is that creek that runs towards the north. You're not going to touch that. You're kind of staying away from that, essentially?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that acts essentially as a border from that parcel A, that northern parcel?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay.
There's a little opening, but other than that, it's, you know, quite a buffer right now.
Yeah. I am in favor of the elevations that you've shown. I think a lot of times what we see on council, from my experience in talking as one council member, is an elevation that is more modern and more flat roof and more industrial-looking. My opinion, I think a lot of people, when they think of townhome lease-style units, which what these are, is the more residential appeal that you've presented in the packet. Pitch roofs, that residential feel. You look at some of the really successful townhome styles we have in our community. I could think off the top of my head, Seven, Newburgh area, in between Eight Mile, Seven Mile, Six in Farmington, just a few that have been really successful products, and kind of that appeal that we're looking for when we think of the leasable units in our community. So I'm really happy to see that this is what you're presenting, conceptually, at least for right now, and I think that'd go a long way. Other than that, I think everything is in order, and I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience on item number one? Seeing none. We have an approving motion from Mr. Barr. Is there direction in regards to consent or regular?
I'd offer consent if there's no objection.
Any objection? I see none. So that'll be on consent. So that'll be voted on as a batch of items. So there's really no need for you to come back on December 13th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We do have models in these units if any council member wants to see them at any point. You know, one at a time, two at a time, you go see.
If you could forward us some contact information through Mark, we can reach out if need be. But thank you. It looks good.
Be happy to. Thank you.
Item two is a waiver use petition from the Planning Commission for petition 2023100213, submitted by Michael Duffield, requesting waiver use approval to operate a ski and snowboard training facility, Shredder, Livonia, at 32543 Schoolcraft Road, located on the south side of Schoolcraft, between Hubbard and Farmington, in the northwest quarter of Section 27. Mr. Toramina?
Very briefly, this is a request, it's a waiver use under the M1 district regulations. This is for what is referred to as an athletic training facility. And Mikey Duffield here wants to operate a ski and snowboard training operation or facility in a multi-tenant industrial building on Schoolcraft Road. This went before the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago, and they are recommending approval all along with me. Thank you.
Anything you want to add, sir?
No, just thanks for the time and considering this. That's, I think it's going to be an awesome school for the community. It's geared towards kids three to 10, to get them introduced to skiing and snowboarding in a safe, indoor, fun environment. And I think it's really going to be an awesome thing about terms of just athletics and things that kids can do in the area and share my passion of the sport with the next generation.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you. I'd like to offer an approving. I think it's a great idea and much needed in our area. We've got a lot of conscientious people that kids are active and keeps them out of trouble. How's that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any audience comment on this? Seeing none.
Mr. President, I heard the rumor is that Councilman Laura Toy wants some tips on how to ski and snowboard, so.
We'll have some open gems for you, for sure. Just for the sign the waiver.
We'll put this on consent if there is no objection. How long is it going to take you to get up and running?
Hopefully, a few months. It shouldn't take long.
Cool. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item three, request to approve annual maintenance and warranty contract from sole source provider from the city clerk regarding Dominion Voting Systems for the annual maintenance and warranty work required on all election equipment for the next four years, starting November 1/23, ending October 31/27, is outlined in the State of Michigan and Wayne County bid for election equipment from budgeted funds. Ms. Nash?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I've come here before, this is a contract that we have to, we have to pay this warranty. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment that needs to be maintained, and this is a way of doing that. And Dominion's been very good about working with us. Whenever we need them, they call, and that will be, continue on with this.
Thank you. Can I have direction from council?
Some would.
We have an approving from Ms. Toy. Is there any audience comment on this item? Seeing none. I'll put that on consent unless there is an objection. See no objection. We're going to item number four, a determination of the local officer's compensation commission from the office of the city clerk regarding salaries of elected officials for the calendar years 24 and 25 in accordance with Section 2.48.030 of Chapter 2.48 of the Livonia Court of Ordinances, as amended. Ms. Nash?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see, Mr. Long is here, the chairman of the LOCC. If you have any questions, you can ask him about the meeting. In your packet, you did get all the information, the minutes and everything from the meeting. So if you have any questions, Mr. Long is here for you.
Any questions for Mr. Long?
Mr. Chair?
I think Mr. Barr was first.
Go ahead. Sorry. Okay. My only question was, as I was reading through the minutes for your meeting, you guys talked about comparisons you had done to other communities, and I guess comparisons within our ranks, we have that from our budget discussions. But could we have that information? Is that available that could be provided to council? I didn't see it in our packet.
We can make that available to you if you would like it. Yes, we have it. We, most of the comparisons were brought forward by the Wayne County, Western Wayne County, the group, WCC. And that's where we get the information. Every, not every community, but a lot of communities do put their information in there every year, and that's where the information comes from.
Yeah, I would, if that could be forwarded to council before next week, I'd appreciate seeing it. So, thanks.
Mr.? If I can just point out, though, there is no vote on this unless you're voting to reject the salary requirements. The ordinance says that it goes into effect 30 days unless council rejects it. So unless council takes an action within 30 days, those salaries will take effect. I just want to point that out.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Toy?
Just a quick comment. Thank you for all the work you do. Sometimes good and thankless and everything else, but thank you, Mr. Long and your team. I think this is overdue, some of these salaries in comparison. We got to stay competitive with other cities, and I think that's just crucial, particularly for our folks that are here, you know, every day. We're here part-time, and the world changes in here when you go full-time. It's interesting, but thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you. I think that also should be directed to the clerk's office and to the HR department, because they did a lot of the research on that for us.
Certainly.
Ms. McIntyre?
Glenn, thanks for your work and stepping up to be the chairman. Just, I have no intention of voting against these or taking any action. Just two comments. One is looking at the clerk and treasurer compared to other department heads and saying they're now among the lowest paid. We've seen a lot of steep increases in department head salaries, so I'm not comfortable necessarily with that being a rationale. I do, I do think that there is reason to increase those, but the other differences compared to department heads, the clerk and the treasurer report to no one in the city. They take as much vacation as they want. I understand they have responsibilities that they have to do, but there are significant differences in being elected versus, you know, reporting in to the mayor and having performance reviews and things. And again, I have no beef with this, and thank you for the work that you do.
To address that, we do recognize that, but they are, you know, they are department heads, but they're not department heads. But they also are, we have clerks in other communities that they were behind as well. We have treasurers in other communities that they were behind. And it's a hard thing to compare because there's different duties in each community as well. So that's part of the juggling act that we do as we sit there as a commission.
And not all clerks and treasurers are elected either, correct?
That's true.
Yeah. And that's a difference, right? Competitive pressures, when you have to hire people, are different from... Competitive, competitive pressures, when you have to hire people, are different from when, when people run for office. And as we saw this past time, there were multiple people that wanted these offices. So, you know, but I have no intention of moving against these. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And again, you know, also the, the positions, we just, there was a lot of the debate that we had. And, you know, we didn't really feel that we had to make a major change, but we did feel that we had to have a little bit more upward momentum on those two positions.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Barr?
I have a procedural question. And Paul, thank, through the chair, Paul, I remember you telling us that before. But, so if we don't offer any resolution tonight, does this even show up on our agenda next week?
Unless, unless you take a motion.
I'm gonna put it on.
You are gonna put it on. Okay. Good. And, and I don't know that I have an issue, but I will note that in the, in, I believe, two of the three times that we've dealt with this since I've been on council, this would be my fourth. Like, we voluntarily chose not to raise the council salaries. I'd like to see that data. I, I'm not, I'm not looking to, I don't have an agenda here, but I'd like to see that data. And I'm not 100% sure where I am on some of these. And so, thank you, Mr. Chair, for saying it's on the agenda next time.
And I just, yeah, and I just wanted to point out that, that there is a time. So unless, the easiest, the easiest thing, I'm not saying it's the right thing. The easiest thing is for council to do nothing.
Right.
And then in 30 days, it's automatic. So if, in the next meeting, I believe it's the 13th, if memory serves me correctly, that's the last chance to do something on it. So at that meeting, if you had a motion to reject it, then you could consider it that way. But if you didn't, then it would go.
So when it's on our agenda next time, and if we wanted to have the, we would just do nothing?
Do nothing, yeah.
Or I guess we could symbolically offer an approval or something, right?
You can always do some, you can always do symbolic or, as Mr. Jolly said, a receive and file of the information and then it goes into effect.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Appreciate your work and efforts. Is there any comment from the audience on item four? Seeing none, this will carry through to the regular agenda on December 13th. Number five is an award of contract and request for authorization to waive the formal bidding process and purchase Motorola Solutions Communication Equipment and Services through the MyDeal State of Michigan Contract Bid Pricing. Comes to us from Livonia Police Department to replace outdated portable and mobile radio communication hardware and services from budgeted funds. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Jolly. Good evening, council members. Captain Eric Mark at here on behalf of Chief Karolsky. So yes, this is a request to purchase Motorola Solution Communication Mobile Radios and Portable Radios for the entire police department. Our current Motorola radios were purchased in 2011, over 12 years ago, have exceeded their end of life and as of December of this year are no longer repairable by Motorola. In addition, our radios are not supportive of the latest encryption that is being mandated for use in the state of Michigan. It is much needed to replace these radios with newer technology that will be supportive moving forward. The radios that have been selected are now equipped with new technology that provides for multi-key encryption as well as enhanced capabilities such as GPS mapping, voice activated commands, and smart connect. This new technology will help our officers better serve our community with more efficient communication and improved decision implementation. We are requesting to waive the sealed bid process as this purchase will be made pursuant to the State of Michigan MyDeal Contract Pricing. The funding for this project will be expended from the 911 Public Safety Communication Account, not our general fund accounts. That concludes our request, Mr. President. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll offer approving on consent. There's objections from my colleagues. These radios are the lifeline of our police officers and technology has advanced drastically since the last time you guys got new radios. So I think it's much needed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Captain, is there, what's the range on these? Just?
Statewide.
Really? That's quite an improvement from earlier.
Right.
Is, is there any tower updates required for the tower behind the?
There are. I can't speak to the specifics of that, but there are updates.
Is that included in this as well?
It is.
Okay, perfect. Okay, is there any audience comments on item number five? Seeing none, we have an approval for consent. You're all set. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Item six is a request to approve the Livonia Command Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of December 1, 2023 through November 2020, November 30th of 2026 from the Civil Service Department regarding the same. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Jolly, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Elizabeth Halleck. I'm here on behalf of the Civil Service Department. I'm happy to present to you the Livonia Command Officers Association Tentative Agreement for the period of December 1st, 2023 through December, or November 30th, 2026. Our goal during negotiations was to demonstrate the city's support for our first responders, but in a fiscally responsible way. Our focus was on retention and also incentivizing our officers to seek promotions within the department. Many of the benefits are similar to the agreement that was reached with the Livonia Police Officers Association, which was voted on earlier tonight. But here are a few highlights. We eliminated the wage tiers and included salary increases for each year of the contract. We modified the eligibility requirements for the promotion for sergeant to lieutenant. We added two hours of comp time for sergeants in recognition of the work that they complete outside of normal working hours. Sorry. And we increased the bi-weekly contributions for the retirement health savings plan from $80 to $100. And we removed Blue Cross Blue Shield as a named insurer, but kept the plan designs for the health insurance benefit to allow the city the opportunity to seek competitive bids while retaining our excellent benefits. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Well done. Vice President Toy?
Approving. Good job.
We have an approving. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, that'll be on consent. Is there any audience comments on item six? See none. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Good job.
Have a good day.
We can keep you longer if you want. You sure? Item number seven is a request for authorization to sell city-owned scattered site housing property acquired from the federal Community Development Block Grant Program from the Livonia Housing Commission for the home located at 20120 Deering to Latifah Scott for a sale price of $168,000. Mr. Ingus?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city council on September 13th approved the sale of various properties that owned by the city of Livonia. One is this property on Deering. The appraised price was $168,000. We listed the home for sale and we do have a buyer, Latifah Scott. She's offered a proposal for the amount of $168,000. This was purchased through the Wayne County Tax Forclosure Program. These dollars will be returned to the Community Development Block Grant Program and reused for other city activities.
Great, great.
Thank you. Can I have direction, please?
Approving.
Okay, we have an approving from Toy. That'll be on consent unless there's an objection. Is there any audience comment on seven? Seeing none. We're all set. We'll go to eight. That's a request for approval to amend the 2016 to 2021 Consolidated Plan and 2019 to 2020 Annual Action Plan from the Livonia Housing Commission to allocate CARES Act funding to the Community Development Block Grant to include activities that prevent, prepare for, and respond to the spread of infectious diseases such as the coronavirus disease 2019. Good evening.
Good evening. Back in 2019, the city council approved the annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And that plan also include an allocation of funding through the federal government for the CARES program. The city of Livonia received $662,701 for CARES Act activities. We've used the majority of that funding. We have approximately $180,000 remaining. HUD has extended the compliance period or final expenditure period until December 31, 2025. And so in our plan that was approved by the city council, we did not have money into what's called neighborhood revitalization. So we would like to allocate that $180,000 into revitalization activities in certain neighborhoods, specifically JCPark. So we will abide by the COVID regulations in terms of social distancing. So all of the playground equipment will be brought up to ADA standards, but also respect the COVID responsibilities under the CARES Act. So at this point, we would like the city council to authorize the allocation of funds into the neighborhood revitalization activity. And whatever we do with those dollars, we will bring those back to council for approval of the bids.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
I'll be offering approval on consent. Jim, I loathe you for, you know, taking advantage of this. Again, this just illustrates how the COVID monies just poured, and our tax dollars just poured into every level of government. And the deadlines keep getting extended. The criteria keeps getting loosened. One of the reasons that we are looking at a difficult budget year this year is there was so much money flowing into this community and others. And again, you know, we can argue we didn't get our fair share. We've gotten so much money, but it's really done a disservice to all levels of government. Because it's a lot, and this is not directed at you at all. You've, you're doing exactly what you should be doing. And one of the reasons we're very happy you're back is the ability to find this money and use it appropriately. But all of this money that flowed into the city, and again, we kept changing the extending deadlines and you could use it on this. We were able to supplant general fund activities and legitimately qualify them as COVID expenses. So by pushing all of this money for the last COVID, we're now coming up on, let's see, we're at the end of 2023, three years since the end of the, you know, the biggest crisis. And we still, you know, the money has to keep getting extended because it couldn't all be used up. And so this is really just philosophical. But this is why we and all other levels of government and government agencies are having a hard time. Because we got accustomed to all this money coming here and we could use it here and here and here instead of general fund. And now this year, when most of it, this coming fiscal year, which started a few days ago, guess what? With some exceptions like these little relatively small pockets, now we have to figure out how to live within our means. So thank you for the great work you do. And, you know, I don't envy my colleagues here that are going to have to make some difficult decisions in the coming year. So thank you, Jim. And I am happy to offer this on consent.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Thanks for all the work that your department does. So now that we're essentially moving this COVID money around, federal dollars, when this money's expended, are we gonna stop calling this the COVID-19 money?
We don't call it COVID-19 money. We call it CARES Act money. That's the title of the federal grant. It's called the CARES Act.
So when we do spend the CARES Act money, are we going to stop referring to diseases such as COVID Disease 2019?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. President.
Is there any audience comments on item number eight? Seeing none, it's on consent.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You can say two if you want.
No, thank you. That's right.
Item nine is an award of contract and request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase Libert EXM Data Center UPS through the MyDeal State Bid Process from the Information Systems Department for the electrical services installation and electrical protection of the city's computer systems from budgeted funds. Mr. O'Neill, welcome.
Thank you. This is a request for replacement at Libert UPS or uninterrupted power supply for the city hall data center. The current unit is over 20 years old and at end of life. The UPS protects our critical servers and equipment from power failures and outages. We're purchasing from Hendrick, who is an authorized Libert provider, using the MyDeal Contract Pricing. RCI, the city's electrical contractor, will be doing the installation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Direction from council, please. Mr. McCullough?
I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Any audience comment? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Item 10 is an award of bid from the Department of Public Works for the 2024-2025 Right-of-Way Tree and Stump Removal Program from Budgeted Funds. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Hello, council. Doug Moore with the Department of Public Works. This is our annual tree removal contract through the forestry section, dead dying disease, storm damaged trees. We had a pre-bid meeting on October 24th. It was advertised on Mitten. We had 10 companies at the pre-bid meeting. Eight companies bid. Burnham's, Berman's Tree Service out of Chelsea is the low bidder on both the 2024 and 2025 program. We have an optional 2025 program. The references were checked and appears that they have the necessary equipment to do the program. The 2024 cost is $345,525. The 2025 cost is $347,925.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to offer, on consent, approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Any audience comments on 10? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
You came just for that?
Yes.
Item 11 is a request for authorization to purchase two replacement pressure-reducing valves from the Department of Public Works for PRV-2 Middle Belts and PRV-3 Merriman from budgeted funds. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, council president, and good evening, council. These two PRVs at Middle Belt and Eight Mile and Merriman in Eight Mile are nearing 30 years of operation. At this point, these two PRVs are beyond their expected useful life and require replacement. They are manufactured by ClayVal and a proposal was received from Jet Pump and Valve LLC, who is the authorized distributor for ClayVal. Jet Pump and Valve will furnish the equipment and assist with startup. And our DPW Water Operations Crew will install the new equipment themselves. It's our recommendation that council authorize an expenditure in the amount of, not to exceed $68,834.37 from budgeted funds of the Water and Sewer Fund and approve payment to Jet Pump and Valve for these PRVs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow. Direction, please. Mr. McCullough?
These pressure-reducing valves sound awesome and in need of repair, so I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Any audience comment? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on to 12. Request to approve, and you're all set, Mr. Rushlow?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. 12 is a request to approve the proposed 2024 Sidewalk Repair Program from Engineering to include approximately 355 scattered locations throughout the city as well as 176 locations from Section 7 through 12, targeted areas that were identified as having two-inch or greater vertical separation. And this cites Council Resolution 784-82. Mr. Zlinsak?
Good evening, council president and the city council members. As you know, it's the sidewalk theme tonight. We're just, you never prepare too early for fixing sidewalks in our city as we have a short construction season from like April to end of October. So looking for approval, for to put the list of addresses together to go out and get these repairs done based on field inspections and the ability to put a special assessment district if, if necessary. So thanks for your assistance.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to offer approving on consent.
Thank you. Is there any audience comments on that? Seeing none. You're lucky I didn't say a two-foot vertical separation, right?
Two inches.
Thank you. Item 13 is a request for council to set aside a date for the purpose of adopting a resolution placing special assessments upon reference properties whose owners have not paid charges connected with the 2022 sidewalk program. Those are locations completed in 2023, Contract 22G, single lot assessments, coming to us from Engineering. Mr. Zlinsak?
Yes. As you know, we had some deferred locations from '22, approximately 68 locations in the south end of the city. The amount of invoices was $55,362.63. They'll go out, again, from the treasurer's office in March. And then if people that don't pay it, will have the ability to go on the tax rolls if necessary. But just looking for your approval to send out the invoices and collect their funds for the work that was completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Direction from council? Mr. Morgan?
I'll offer approving on consent.
Thank you, sir. Any audience comments? Seeing none. We'll move on to 14. That's a request for council to set aside a date for the purpose of adopting a resolution placing special assessments upon reference properties. We have not paid charges connected with the 2023 sidewalk program, 23G, single lot assessments from Engineering.
I will offer an approving.
Thank you. We'll put that on consent unless there's an objection. Any audience comments on 14? Seeing none. We'll move to 15. That's a request to accept storm water facilities maintenance agreement from Engineering from Livonia Center LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain that provides adequate drainage for property at 30090 and 30010 Plymouth Road in the southeast quarter of Section 26. Mr. McCullough?
Approval on consent?
No audience comments. Item 16 is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and the city of Livonia from Engineering for the improvement of Inkster Road from Schoolcraft to Five Mile with the proposed city's participation estimated at. with the proposed city's participation estimated at 4.5375% for $108,174. This is Wayne County Work Order 47159. Mr. McCullough.
I'll offer an approving on consent.
Is there any audience comments? Seeing none. We'll move to 17. Request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors for design engineering services for the 2024 traffic signal modernization projects at the intersections of Linden Avenue and Newburgh Road and at Levann Road and 5 Mile Road from the Engineering Division regarding the same. This is citing Council Resolution 336-21. Mr. Zelensik, can you give a little bit of insight on this? What does this mean?
Sure. So as you know, Traffic Commission is beginning concerns about the intersection at Levann and at 5 Mile as far as making left turns there. We've got numerous concerns over the years. There's been accidents, fatalities, and things of that nature. As you know, it's very difficult to make that left turn during peak seasons. We're looking to modernize that traffic signal and put a left turn phaser to help make it easier for, obviously with the school, with the hospital there, St. Trinity Health there, make it easier for people that converse in that area to make it safe with the left turn phasing. Most recently, we worked with OHM at Joint Merriman. We paid for the design. County put federal grants in at Joint Merriman for that location. This is, again, MDOT Highway Safety Funds that OHM put in for at two locations. One was at 5 and Levann. Another concern was at Linden and Newburgh, which the poles keep getting hit over there. So we want to make it safe to avoid having to spend money in going fixing those side traffic signals at Linden and Newburgh. So twofold, looking for your approval for OHM to design modernization of these two locations. What it requires is 10% match by the county for 5 and Levann of $35,000. Another portion would be $27,000 by the city for Newburgh and Linden. So again, it's an effort to make the city safer, people that traverse those areas, and hope to seek your approval and work with OHM to do that and Wayne County in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Yeah, and what might prove to be my last question in my council tenure. It's weird. Mr. Zelensik, the Linden and Newburgh intersection, I was just, by the way, the Levann thing makes total sense. I personally know people have had accidents there, and we've all read about them. And it's always perplexing to me that that intersection is the issue that it is because it doesn't seem like anywhere close to one of the busiest intersections of Livonia. And yet, there's a lot of problems there, so no issue there. Linden and Newburgh, I'm not clear on what we're doing there. It says that the pole's been struck several times. Well, what are we doing to?
So there's a fatality. As you know, probably four years ago, there was a lady killed. There was a cross over there.
I know. I know who it was.
And unfortunately, again, you know, there's a side post on the southwest corner of Linden and Newburgh, and then there's another post on the northeast corner of Newburgh. The goal is to maybe do a cantilever to make it easier for people to see, obviously, coming off Linden and north and south Newburgh to make that left turn.
You're getting rid of poles.
Yes. Steve Loveland's here from OHM, but we'll work to design the best way we can to make that area safe. But with the fatality that was there, looking at the way to improve the safety. And then, again, with the new modernization, we can actually have traffic signals, you know, for school buses that traverse the area that actually have reflective backgrounds, like you see at 7 Mile, foggy days, more illumination. It's gonna cost savings on LEDs. You can't go wrong.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm personally familiar with that fatality, and I had not even made the connection with what we're doing here. So thanks for explaining that.
Can I have direction on 17?
I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Any audience comment? Seeing none on the 18. Request to approve license agreement for a portion of the city of Livonia Glendale property from law with Consumers Energy for annual rent of $39,000 for a one-year term beginning December 2023, with the ability to extend the agreement for up to three additional one-month periods.
This is unused property that we are making some revenue off by renting it out to consumer property. Consumers Power, we've been doing it for the last several years, and it's a continuation of an increase in the rent that allows us to go one year with the option to increase the length of the lease.
Thank you. Can I have direction, council? Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to offer approving on, consent on approving.
Thank you. There's no audience comments. That'll be on consent. Item 19 is the appointment of Linda Shield to the Zoning Board of Appeals from Mr. Barr, effective immediately in order to fill the unexpired term, which expires July 12 of '26. Mr. Barr.
Yeah, Mr. Jolly, this was a very easy decision for me as I was considering and interviewing different people that I was considering for this position. And in the course of those conversations, at one point, I asked Linda, I said, would you be interested in this? And after thinking about it, she said she would be. And that made my decision very, very easy. I, we're all familiar with Linda. I think she's the model of professionalism. She's, she's done a phenomenal job in every position she's had, most recently with running the Treasurer's Office. And the opportunity to, sorry, I guess I'm not talking directly in here. The opportunity to continue to benefit from her presence in this way for the city, I think, is just a win for all sides. So it's with great enthusiasm that I offer her for your consideration. And I don't know, Linda's been up at that podium a lot. I don't know if she wants to come up and say anything or not, but maybe not.
Well, Ms. McCarter.
I'd like to offer Mr. Barr's nomination for consent. I cannot express how fortunate I think the city is that Ms. Shield is willing to continue to serve in an important capacity. And everything that Mr. Barr has just said is so true of Linda, the professionalism, the dedication, integrity, doing a job with whatever and beyond needs to be done. So we're very, very lucky. The city is very, very lucky that she will continue to serve. So I'd like that on consent. There are no objections.
Thank you. Linda, do you want to say anything?
Given the lateness of the evening, I will keep my comments short. I thank you very much for this opportunity, and if passed, I look forward to serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. That'll be on consent. There's no audience here except for our next subject of item number 20. It's an appointment of Mark Rotundo to the Zoning Board of Appeals from Mr. Morgan, effective immediately to fill an unexpired term, which ends July 12 of 2024. Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, you know what? I'd like to introduce Mark Rotundo. I've known him for a little bit now, and I think he would be excellent in this position. He's a very diligent, hard worker. Has, he was born and raised in Livonia. He has a successful family business in this community. And he has good construction experience. And being on the zoning board, I think he'd be perfect for that. And I reached out to him, and I'm glad he accepted. And I think he'll be an excellent addition to our community and this board. So, thank you.
Ms. Toy.
I would concur wholeheartedly. Mark, known his family for many, many years. Good members of the Italian-American Club and just real solid, hardworking people. And Mark's lived by that, and I know he'll continue that tradition. And he'll be a strong asset as well to that Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you, Mr. Morgan, for nominating him.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich.
I'll offer an approving on consent for Mr. Morgan's nomination of Mr. Rotundo. Thank you.
Mr. Rotundo, where'd you go to high school?
Detroit Catholic Central.
There you go. And we will end it on that. Glad to have you aboard. That'll be on consent. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for your support.
Is there, is there anything additional from the council? Is there anything additional from the audience? Seeing none, we're gonna call it a night.
He sat here all night. Maybe he doesn't want to, but does Mark have anything he wants to say?
He's had a long night. I'll keep it brief.